Please join us, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, considered by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join our long silence.
Thank you very much, please proceed.
Please turn off your cell phones if you have them.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second?
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action that needs to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the December fifth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Human Resources includes, A, the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item five from the Board of Supervisors includes, A, authorization for the chairman to sign proposal from Whitfield and Eddie PLC for legal services regarding the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center project. This would regard the services of John Templar as previously approved by the board. And items B, C, and D are similar. Uh, the, this reads to authorize the chairman to sign the collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME Council sixty-one, Iowa Local thirty-four sixty-two, for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven, with item B being for the Woodbury County Courthouse employees, item C being for the Woodbury County Juvenile Detention employees, and item D being for the Woodbury County Assistant County Attorney's employees. Um, I would like to note on these agreements of collective bargaining that, uh, that the board is going to approve tonight, that, uh, you'll notice that there is a, there is a larger number in there for the Assistant County Attorneys. That is for year one of three. Uh, you'll notice, um, every other year, one, two, and three for the other groups, um, as well, the attorneys is for three percent. Um, the reason why there's a nine percent for the first year, and I just want to, uh, commend the board for their willingness to address a issue is related to, um, the appropriate staffing levels and compensation of those employees. And I don't think anything speaks more to the board than the number of five to six vacancies for the last year in that, in that division. And I think it's, uh, a, a great step the board is going to be taking to address that. Uh, this is every bit as involved with public safety as, you know, having deputies out there to make arrests. Uh, you need attorneys to, uh, levy the prosecution so that those same people aren't out there getting arrested again. So, um, the execution copy in front of me is, does have a couple typos changed and on item five D, uh, what's in the backup, uh, is a little bit different because it, so there's some typos and also the uh, starting point, uh, omitted a two-point-five percent increase for this year. So that is correct in the execution copy. But otherwise, we scrambled to get this on the agenda, uh, so the board could approve it as soon as possible. So. With that, are there any other comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Well, seconded the motion by Radig. All those, yes, Mr.?
So this constitutes all the bargain for agreements that are outstanding?
Um, there are two remaining, um, which will be taken up at a, at another time. Um, but these were what we could schedule on the same date to save on costs.
I appreciate it very much. And then I was wondering, can we get an update on what that's gonna cost? I know, I think, uh, Dr. Scaff is out right now, but is that something that for next meeting? We can kinda get a budget picture of, because I think there's about seven-hundred thousand dollars somewhat that we're gonna be allowed in growth. And so is that something that we can maybe have as an informational item?
And she may already have that.
Okay.
So, but it'll be available by next Tuesday.
Okay. Appreciate it very much.
Yep. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item six from the mayor of Mowville, Mr. Fisher, um, and anyone from Mowville that is involved with this discussion directly. This is for action. This is to discuss and/or take action on the reconstruction of Frontage Road in Mowville. So, Mr. Fisher, I'll let you start.
Um, thank you for letting us be here. Uh, I've seen you guys so much lately. It's like home, old home week here, you know? I talked to Karen just the other day, so. Okay, introductions. Um, Scott Gurnhart now is our city engineer. Uh, Tom Conley is our mayor pro tem. And then, uh, Steve Maxwell now is our head of our economic development group. Um, Frontage Road now has been mentioned on and off for, uh, a number of years now, so it's not a new topic. We've talked about it several times, just mentioning it. Okay, the city of Mowville came to the board through bars in July, uh, or late July or early August to go ahead now and say, we're serious about doing something about Frontage Road. And the reason is, we have a lot of, uh, improvements, uh, happening there. Um, one now is a medical clinic. They're out there digging, uh, digging soil away right now. And then Mowville Latte has purchased the ground behind them with the idea of making a larger, larger building. So that, to the east end, that's a, a big improvement for, uh, Mowville. Um, okay, uh, in September twelfth, I sent an email of it by Joel Robinson. He's a council member saying that, uh, at this time now, we are just interested in going from Third Street up to Fair Street, including Fair Street, because it's a real bad intersection coming off the highway. Uh, November twenty-third, I resent the same message, uh, stating we are still in, very interested in working with Woodbury County and to get, uh, Frontage Road redone. Okay, uh, at the November twenty-eighth meeting, I was, uh, told by the, I was told the board, uh, told the board our intentions to get on the December twelfth agenda, and so here we are. Okay, the first page, this now is, uh, Security National Bank, and this is, uh, this, excuse me, excuse me. Um, Security National Bank, and this is already done. Okay, so this is going to be worried about. But we have, uh, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars already invested. And this involves everything, uh, the road, the pavement, we already did, the inlets to the various buildings, and then also, uh, some, um, storm sewer work and some sewer work. Okay, the next page now. Okay, uh, Lewis Drug, that's how much money, uh, we, that's how much money, money we got into it already. We, we bought the old trailer court. We removed the building and, uh, we started developing it. Uh, Mowville Medical Clinic, uh, we, we bought the whole, old hotel. We went ahead and tore it down, hauled it away. We went ahead now and had the best was moved first. Uh, we have that much money involved in it already. Okay, uh, phase one construction now, that's again, now that's down the lower end. Uh, talks about the engineering costs and also construction material. Now we get to phase two. Um, phase two now is the construction now of, um, of, uh, Frontage Road, of what's going the rest of the way, and that's nine-hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the whole, whole cost now from where we started on maybe what, uh, Second Street all the way up to, uh, uh, Fair Street now would be two, over two million dollars. Okay, the last page now is the page I went ahead and gave to, uh, Mark Nara earlier in the year. And, uh, it wasn't broken down. Uh, he asked for some, some figures, and I just went ahead and gave him some figures and included everything. If you notice on here now, uh, the sidewalk, uh, water main, water connections, hydrants, uh, uh, gate valves, uh, tees, uh, retaining wall, that's all been taken out. That'd be the city's responsibility. Uh, this all added together now, uh, well, less, uh, what's called, yeah, all added together now comes up nine-hundred and forty thousand. Uh, the cost estimate less the water, uh, less water, sidewalk, retaining wall, associates in, engineering cost and contingency comes up to nine, uh, seven thousand nine ninety-eight, seven hundred, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred. What we're gonna ask the Woodbury County now is to pay their half, which would be, uh, three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty.
What was the figure again, Jim?
Uh, of, of your half?
Right.
Okay.
Of what you're asking for.
Well, uh, three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Now, something go ahead and, uh, mention now, uh, this was, uh, done last January. Since last January, the costs now have increased, uh, almost, uh, well, sixty-seven thousand dollars. So it's not gonna get cheaper by next summer. Or summer after.
So one of the questions I have is Mark had emailed us a figure of six-sixty-eight, one-thirty-six.
Yeah.
And do you know if that's because, and I know he's not here tonight that I see, but do you know if that's because that was an original?
Yeah.
Cost and it's now been refigured to reflect the higher?
Yeah, everything was into it. Everything was in there. We, we took out, like I said, we took out the sidewalks. We took out the retaining wall, uh, water lines, stuff like this. So it has dropped down some, quite a bit.
Okay, but that six-sixty-eight's different than the total of seven-ninety-eight, so I'm just trying to figure.
Right, right, yeah.
Did that go up because that wasn't?
No, it went down, because we're, we're asking, uh, was, what's, was it sixty-six hundred?
No, I understand what you're saying. You, you went from nine-hundred and forty thousand, two hundred, right, down to seven-ninety-eight?
Taking everything out, right.
Three hundred, taking everything out. I'm just trying to de-conflict. Mark had sent a total figure without those things of six-sixty-eight. And so I guess I'm just wondering if maybe that was an original cost and then it was refigured, or, or am I?
I, I didn't see the number that Mark sent, but I'm guessing.
Sorry, could you introduce yourself, please? Sorry.
Scott Gurnhart, true engineering, land surveying. Um, I, I helped prepare this. Um, I, I think what he probably sent, he took out these items of the previous estimate. I don't know if he took out some mobilization, traffic control, and some additional items. Um, I, that, that would be my guess is that he took the water main, the sidewalk, the retaining wall, and a few additional items out.
Okay. And was he going on his own estimates or based on yours, or do we know?
I'm guessing he is basing on mine, but I, I do not know.
Okay.
I didn't see that from Mark.
If I may?
Yeah.
Kyle Gates with the engineers office on behalf of Mark. Uh, he went off the estimate from back in? January. And the only thing I'm noticing different is he didn't include the outlet apron, and then it was the old, old numbers there, and that's how you got the estimate that he had sent you. So between this new estimate, outlet apron is included now on the new estimate for what's being proposed. That wasn't all included in Mark's
Okay.
figures here, so.
Thank you very much. That was my.
I know when, when I was at the Mowville Medical Clinic groundbreaking, there was a lot of folks that were talking about getting that road done, and then the next week you had an open house at Security National Bank, and they were talking about how great their half of the road is, so I know it's obviously something we wanna get done. And this might be more of a question for you, but on that Frontage Road now, and not to get too the weeds on the engineering, but I know there's a lot of folks that park off the road or on the shoulder in front of Mowville Latte, Subway, and Jeff's Bar. Would that be, would that be subsequently paved as well for parking there? Would the road be wider? What, what are you thinking? Because I have had some questions about that, where folks would, would like to have that parking, especially if it's a, a semi off of Highway twenty or a truck and trailer, so.
Sure, we, we are proposing some parking in that same area.
Okay.
On, on that same side.
Sure, I'll agree.
So one question, look at the original estimate from your January ninth. I'm just going through, so the mobilization is a ten thousand dollar increase since the beginning of the year. Removal payments went up by nine thousand. Paving an eight-inch number six is up by twenty-three thousand. Number thirteen hydrants up by a thousand. Modular block retaining walls up by eight thousand, and then miscellaneous is up by six. That's, are those, will those numbers keep consistent and for this next year, if we wait one more year, will those go up with proportionally? And similar, so are we looking at another, like, let's just say for the eight-inch paving PCC line item number six, are we looking at another twenty-three thousand dollar increase?
And, and the new estimate was based on just projects that I, I've been involved in this year. Those are items that tend to go up
Okay.
in this past construction season.
Okay. Now, this estimate would be, sorry, Steve.
The actual, Mowville, Iowa, anything like that. One of the reasons that we're wanting to get this done this year is all because of the Mowville Medical Clinic being done. And, um, our guy that, uh, Mike Weaver out there wants to have this kinda done this year at all, so we're not torn up for two years in a row. So anyway, so, and then also costs increasing at all. So that's one of the reasons that this has been kinda pushed that we wanna try and get to it, too.
So this estimate here is just from Third Street to Fair Street?
Correct.
To pave that, okay.
Yes.
Because I know that Mark, I met with Mark Nara last week, and I know he was, we were talking about the, this, the portion that you guys have already paved, you know, half of that was technically the county's, and so he didn't know if some of, some of that expense had been put into this new estimate or not, so.
It, it's not included in this estimate. It's just a future project.
Sure, thank you.
Steven?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm a hundred percent supportive of this. I'm, you know, the proactiveness that you all show in growing the community is to be commended. And at the three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollar rate, my question comes down to finances from our side, um, how we pay for it, and so I'm looking at Dennis Butler for a second. Dennis, given the fact that we're facing probably the most daunting budget in our nine years, and that debt service has no limitations, correct?
Correct.
Based on House files, seven eighteen?
Seven eighteen, correct.
Could we not take four-hundred thousand, um, over five years at eighty thousand dollars per year? Given that this isn't something that Mark, our, Nar, our engineer has programmatically put in, is that an option?
Possibly, because we'd like to do a TIF project, and the reason I say TIF project, we also got an urban project that's gonna probably be let next spring called the North Elk Creek Road. From where we started there up to the roundabout. And the county's gonna probably be the, I talked to Mark, and I also talked to engineer in the city there, Gordy. And we will be the project manager. We'll be paying all the bills, then getting reimbursed from the city. I'd like to combine these two into one TIF project. But the problem is, we won't be able to know the exact numbers probably till next spring. But that's about a two million dollar project.
Can we make a promise of funding for tonight contingent upon TIF, and if the TIF thought, falls through, through a five-year CIP? What are your?
I don't, can we do a CIP with a joint governmental body? I thought CIP reserves strictly for Woodbury County, not a joint project.
Right now, it's a county road.
Well, this is something.
Right, but we're improving our, our half, so to speak. I'm just throwing out ideas.
So we, we could direct Mark to use a secondary road fund budget and then maybe use CIP for bridges.
Well, you, you better talk to Mark before you do that, because he's on the strict DOT guidelines also.
Sure. I'm just saying, for, there's other projects that Mark would have that would be four-hundred thousand dollars, including equipment purchases that might be in the budget. I don't know what he has programmed in there for, for this one yet, but, you know, it's one of the larger budgets in, in the county and, um.
It's very, very restrictive, too, more than any of our other budgets. I still think we should use TIF, combine the two projects, do one TIF bond issue for both projects, because it falls within our renewal, because it's on all county roads.
And I, I agree with that.
I like that first and foremost.
TIF. And next week, you can get more of an estimate, get close to what we're talking about. It takes about, probably a couple of months, by the time we get all the notices out, the hearing notices, have the hearings, you get the thing rolling. And if we say, well, it's two million, now half of that two million, or a portion of that two million would be reimbursed to the county, so we wouldn't be borrowing. Two million would be borrowing. Yeah, we'd be borrowing two million, and then income, other taxation from TIF would be, pay for part of it.
Oh, I mean, uh, if we're, we get this on the agenda as a motion, I'd make that motion.
Uh, could you, could you state that, please?
How much money are we talking about?
Three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five fifty-one?
One fifty.
Okay. Okay. And I'll get with Mark, well, he's in Ames this week, but first thing Monday, I'll get with him and talk about the Elk Creek, see if we can combine the two to do them on one issue. And when they go ahead and get their project started, get it done with anticipation, we'll have a TIF money there. And we should, I see no reason it wouldn't fall through.
Before we receive a motion, Joshua, is there any legal considerations for us?
Well, um, there are. I think Dennis should have the conversation with Mark, obviously. I, I think in, in general, what's being talked about, um, is a possibility. But that conversation with Mark should happen, and, and there are, if, if the TIF route can happen, um, that would alleviate concerns that there might be if, with backfilling the secondary road fund with CIP or something else. So I think that the TIF route is probably the, the best route to investigate at this point.
So is your motion to move three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty to improve reconstruction of Frontage Road through tax increment financing?
Pretty much.
I would second that.
We can't move the money yet.
Right.
Because we don't have the money yet. It won't come in till we do the foundation.
I don't know, to direct the, uh.
So we're just basically advancing money.
Well, and obviously, this is an estimate, too, and it's gonna be subject to being bid out and, so it's not gonna be an exact dollar figure.
Well, to direct Dennis and Mathis, uh,
Mark.
Dennis and Mark to, uh, of course, make this happen, I guess.
So the motion, uh, by Radig, seconded by Taylor, uh, will, th- this will come back as a, as affirmed up cost at some point for approval? Is that correct?
Well, not till it's bid out. Well, right.
But you gotta combine Elk Creek Road. You have to combine Elk Creek Road and this one preferably in order to renew the urban renewal area, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's all our new, urban renewal area, because we did, when we did the urban renewal amendment, we had to do all county roads, bridges, and culverts. So we're covered. I would say just use TIF funding. Mark and I will work out the details. Including the Elk Creek, because he's got estimates on that already, but you never know till it's bid out.
Yeah.
So we get the process started.
Well, we've discussed this for years, obviously, and I think narrowing down to this funding mechanism is probably the best compared to straight contributions or doing part of it piecemeal. That's the third one. I'm gonna get raked over the coals for people having their phones go off.
Yeah, it's this button.
Oh.
An advantage of not using
Simulated phone.
Using debt service instead of CIP, there's approximately six-hundred million dollars worth of additional money, increment monies we can add to that tax base to fund this, which makes a big difference in the tax levying.
This, uh, it is an economic development type project, though. It's a frontage road, and this is what TIF is, you know, also intended for. So it does make sense to use that as a finance mechanism.
And I don't think with recent developments, there's really any doubt that it's gonna continue in that area. So I don't think it's really a gamble. Yeah.
So do we need to, or is there any desire tonight? My understanding is we're improving this and then we're giving it over. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So do we need to state that tonight, that that's something that? Uh, it seem, it would seem to me like that's gonna take a, a motion of the board to cede over, um,
Vacate or whatever.
Right. So.
Correct.
Or do we want to improve it and deal with that at a later date? It's up to you guys, but I think at some point, i- i- it's not gonna just be a fait accompli that it's a, a Mowville deal unless we do that.
We, we have, uh, our, um, a countryman financial and then also our bank, and we have some land that we're taking care of right now. We're vacating. So I mean, can, apparently, to accord our attorney, it can be done later.
Maybe that's also a question for Kyle. Do you have anything to add on the process for vacating in this case? Could you please?
It wouldn't be a vacation.
Is it really a vacation, or is it just a transfer of ownership from the county to the city?
Right, and it's not something that's on the agenda tonight. I think we also need to look into the timing of that in relation to if we're gonna use TIF funding. Um, so to me, I think that would be an issue to take up another night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, Mr. Fisher?
Yep.
All good?
Sounds great, yes, very much. We will go ahead then and, uh, have Scott go ahead and draw up papers with the idea of letting bids and try and move forward.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Would you please, uh, restate the motion clearly?
I'll look to Mr., one of you to do that.
I think the motion is to move authorization of three-hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars through tax increment financing to improve reconstruction of Frontage Road. Is that what you were thinking?
And directing staff to, uh, I guess that would be what, uh.
The formalities of setting up the TIF.
Yeah.
Because, well, I've talked to our bond attorney, too, because I wanna make sure we're all kosher with this by, because we're gonna need the money soon. So we need to get the hearing going, but adding Elk Creek Road to it.
So perhaps, and to direct staff accordingly? Is that okay?
Okay. I'll listen to the meeting tomorrow.
Well, you don't have to. I mean, we can, they can state it again.
Which would you prefer, Mr. Auditor?
We'll be okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
There was.
Okay.
Yep, a long time ago.
I just wanna mention, uh, the railroad ramble was a great success. We had just many, many, many cars in town. And the other thing is now we're drilling, uh, for wells on the south side of twenty. Where, uh, the water is excellent, so in about two years, you'll see a new water tower up there, a treatment plant, and a filtration plant. So we're gonna go ahead and go full steam ahead, so we wanna grow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thanks, everyone. Item seven from Secondary Roads, filling in for Mark Nara is Kyle. Uh, for action is, A, approval of quotation from Dixon Construction for seventy thousand dollars for bridge F dash one fifteen repair on Carol Avenue north of two-tenth Street.
Any discussion on that?
What kind of a bridge is that, that they're taking out and they're gonna replace it with?
It's, uh,
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Steel mainspan, wood approaches, wood piling, it's all wood underneath, replacing all four caps.
Okay.
This, this bridge was constructed back in two thousand and everything else is holding up well. We dropped it to ten tons about a year ago, and it's continuing to deteriorate, so we're getting ahead of it here.
All move.
Approval?
Second.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of the contract for gravel production at the Little Sioux Gravel Pit with bedrock for one million, nine-hundred and eighty thousand.
Were there other bids on this one as well?
Um, not on this contract, I believe. This is just continuation of what we were doing before.
Okay.
Same contractor.
Do you know what the source of, I know what the source of funds is, but the status of funds in terms of the ten million dollar county road improvement bond, once this is, not to put you on the spot, I know that's a.
The funding, no, I do not know.
Okay.
Other than.
I'm looking to, Dennis may have a.
We have about six and a half million as of probably a couple of days ago. This will be taken off of that, so we're using up some of the ten million here, quite a chunk.
Okay. And that's through Tiffing?
No, that's, yeah, that's through a TIF bond issue we did, the ten million, yes.
Thank you.
This will be a significant portion of our total project for amount of gravel.
It's good to see that getting out and, you know, as we incrementally, no pun intended, we can keep building up roads, so. I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, seconded by Nelson. Hearing no other discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is approval of contract for gravel production at the Little Sioux Gravel Pit with bedrock for six-hundred thousand dollars.
I'd move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, seconded by Nelson. Any discussion, Mr. Taylor?
Just to clarify, this isn't for, I know it's all new. Just to clarify, this isn't for, I know it's all new gravel, but this is for what we could term maintenance gravel versus building back up to that four to six inch base.
This is not that. This is for spot treatments and any of the other roads that aren't part of the improvement program, which are a couple hundred miles of other roads.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Is there a reason these were put into two different, is it just because of that, they're going to two different piles?
Lots of money.
Okay.
And, yeah, we're trying to keep them separate.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item eight from the Board of Supervisors for information from myself. This is correcting the record on misapplication of parliamentary procedure and false accusations made by a citizen against the chair during the approval of the agenda item at the December fifth meeting. Uh, the chair was falsely accused and maligned by a citizen during the December fifth meeting, and the chair is correcting the public record with this item, including a letter to fellow board members and the backup materials. Uh, the board allowed a citizen to state supposed points of order during the approval of the agenda item of the December fifth meeting. Unfortunately, this was abused, and the citizen used the opportunity by complaining about prior meetings, mischaracterizing recorded events, and making false accusations about the chair's actions during the prior meeting. These meetings are recorded, and I think it's important to agree on the record. Um, it is recommended to simply receive this into the record. I don't see a reason to belabor the point, and we can move on from here, assuming there's no objection or comment or discussion about this item. Mr. Turner, do you wish to discuss?
Yes, I'd like to discuss.
In that case, I will read the letter. And then you may discuss. Fellow supervisors, you made a mistake when you overruled my determination and allowed citizen Doyle Turner to raise points of order during the approval of the agenda item on December fifth. You set a bad precedent that any citizens who simply walk to the podium and cry objection can make their concerns known at the beginning of the meeting, rather than wait until the relevant agenda items or wait until citizen concerns like everybody else. Our bylaws say we must also abide by, or we try to abide by, Robert's Rules of Order. I need to improve on controlling some aspects of the meetings, as the citizen rightly pointed out, and I will endeavor to do so. But some things need to be made clear, including what a quote "point of order" is. Points of order should be brought by members of the assembly, not audience members. The proper procedure would have been for the citizen to alert a board member and for that board member to raise a point of order. Points of order are not debatable and should prompt immediate ruling by the chair, not lead into several more grievances for several minutes. Points of order must cite the rule broken, not make irrelevant points, such as properly noticed agenda items not being the same thing as emergency items. That is known as a straw man argument, not a point of order. Points of order to disagree with a recommended motion on a future item should be brought up during that item, not before. Finally, points of order must be raised at the time a rule is broken, not seven days or seven months later. The fact that the supposed points of order were not vocally supported by any board member, parliamentarian, or legal counsel, and further that the vote to approve the agenda passed five zero is evidence that the citizen's supposed points of order were really what he admitted what they were at the beginning, simply objections. This is a rhetorical question for my fellow board members. Are you comfortable setting a precedent that allows citizen concerns at the beginning of each meeting if a citizen is too impatient to wait and tell citizen concerns? And are you comfortable with setting a precedent that allows citizens to approach the board under the guise of objecting to the current agenda instead of calling for, uh, instead calling for points of order based on, quote, "last week"? What is the remedy you expect the chair to rule on? The use of a time machine? One of the citizen's supposed points of order for the December fifth agenda was to complain about the conduct of the chair and auditor during the citizen concerns item of the November twenty-eighth meeting, in which Auditor Gill provided the board copies of a resolution he asked to be considered at a subsequent meeting. Although Auditor Gill was allowed to speak during citizen concerns, the chair did later send an email to all elected officials politely requesting that they try to utilize posted agenda items more often than citizen concerns. Someone forward the contents of this email to citizen Doyle Turner, and we can only speculate who. Auditor Gill responded to my email in agreement, as shown by the attached. This is the email of which Doyle said, quote, "I have a real problem with the chairman sending an email out to all the heads of the staff saying we shouldn't do this anymore, when, Mr. Chairman, this lays right on you," end quote. The point is well taken, and I am doing my best as chairman to apply the rules consistently. But I find it difficult when just prior to that situation, there was a twenty-minute citizen concern session where two supervisors, Doyle and other citizens, were discussing back and forth what time and place and manners of drainage district concerns should be handled. Doyle was even inviting another citizen up to the podium to answer a question he posed on the citizen, to the citizen on legal processes. I would ask Doyle and, and any other backseat parliamentarians to likewise be consistent in applying the same criticisms regarding timeliness, deliberation, and leading questions to any public citizen, auditor, or supervisor who bends the rules. I did not bang my gavel during discussion on the drainage district process because I prefer to err on the side of relaxed rules which allow maximum citizen involvement. And I am happy to admit that I did not run the citizen concerns portion of the November twenty-eighth meeting perfectly, but I need your help to do that. Worse than false points of order, the citizen's comments contain false accusations against the chair, which, because they were spoken into the public record, will now be corrected in the public record. Doyle emphatically stated, quote, "In fact, the chair attempted to, they deliberated back and forth with the auditor and the chair, and the chair tried to deliberate and make a decision during citizen, take action during citizens' concerns." None of this follows our rules. It is completely out of the bounds of what we've ever done before or should do, I guess I should say," end quote. I watched the November twenty-eighth meeting several times, thinking that if I continued to replay it, then Doyle's claims about me would come true. I also called Doyle on the phone and spoke to him for about an hour, wondering if he could convince me that I said something I didn't, and in the vain hopes that he just might believe me and give me the benefit of the doubt. But no. Here's what I saw from the recording instead. One, on the auditor's proposed resolution, the board received it into the record as we have received hundreds of things into the record during citizen concerns, whether they be pictures of a tree stump mailbox, a rural resident alleges violates code, or stacks of pie graphs about pipelines and wind turbines. We received things into the record in order to publish in the minutes for public information, the materials we referenced during board consideration or discussion. It was not, quote, "taking action," or, quote, "making a decision" to receive the resolution. At no time did I, as I'm being accused of, promise that the resolution will be on the next week's agenda. My pro, my response following the reading of the resolution was two words: "Thank you." It is amazing that from these two words, such embellishment can happen in someone's head. Doyle has seen us receive hundreds of pages into the record over the last several months, and it is interesting that the one time he objects to it is when the materials are critical, Supervisor Taylor. Two, during board concern, Supervisor Taylor was first to mention resigning the vice chairmanship, stating, quote, "I will step down from that role," end quote. He inquired if that was still desired because he had only heard those opinions from three board members through media reporting. I said, quote, "We can settle that right now," and members of the board indicated that they still held their previously stated opinions. Supervisor Taylor then initiated a question to Auditor Gill, asking if the item should be on the following week's agenda by saying, quote, "I still respect the auditor as the auditor in his role, and that's why I'm deferring to you. Is that right, Pat?" end quote. Pat says, "Sure." Auditor Gill says, "Sure." After all of this, I say, quote, "If there is a really willing resignation, then that will be on the agenda," end quote. So it is a complete butchering of the record for Doyle to publicly accuse the auditor and the chair for making a decision during citizen or board concerns, when Supervisor Taylor was the one initiating every point of this matter, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But once again, it's strange that Supervisor Taylor is left out of the criticism here. I appreciate a lot of things Doyle Turner has to say, and I believe we all wish more citizens were as engaged as he is. But when he shows up to meetings with so many words that he starts shoving them in other people's mouths, that needs to be discouraged. And if anyone disagrees with these corrections to the record, please check the receipts. Is there any board comment before we receive a citizen concern? Then, Mr. Auditor, please, time for three minutes. State your name and address to the record and your comment, please.
So, uh, first off, I never actually received that email. I just heard about it. Uh, second off, um, Pat Gill is auditor, and as auditor, he is a parliamentarian. Um, we've seen him do this dance with Michelle several times where he comes down into citizen concerns and then does things through a citizen comment, and I've, I've raised a discussion about that. Nothing seems to ever change. But what was different this time was Pat Gill, as parliamentarian of this board, has a fiduciary responsibility to this board that is unique than anybody else in that it is his job as parliamentarian to try and guide this board in a parliamentarian way, which includes but not limited to following the law. When Pat Gill gave that resolution and asked for action on that resolution, that he knew full well that there was no legal standing for this board to act on that resolution. So by asking the board to take action on something that they don't have, that the board doesn't have legal standing on, is violating his fiduciary responsibility to the board. When the chairman put that resolution on the agenda, even though it was only an informational resolution, it facilitated Pat Gill's violation of his fiduciary responsibility. So that is the only reason why I s- I stood up and objected to that being on the agenda item, was because this was more egregious than anything that's ever happened that I've witnessed where Pat Gil did something from citizen concerns. When it comes to the, uh, the part where I accused the chairman of trying to, uh, take action during consider, citizen concerns, you have the quote in your, uh, in your text here, "We can settle that right now." I think any reasonable person would take those words as a call to action. I think Jeremy Taylor took it as a call to action, and he thought it was inappropriate for it to be done in citizen concerns, and that's why he asked for the parliamentarian's permission, or, or opinion, I should say, on what should actually be done. So I, while we disagree, uh, the chairman and I disagree, um, my intent was not to malign the chair. My intent was not to lie about your actions. I think we just see them in a different light. But I think that "we can settle that right now" is pretty reasonable to be taken as action.
Is that all?
That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other board comment? All right. Item nine from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Raddick for information. This is Law Enforcement Center Project Update.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start off here. I've got an, uh, an LEC update from Baker Group that, um, came to me first thing this morning. Uh, we get this on the agenda last week, and in an effort to give the, uh, the most recent updates, they sent me an update the morning of our, of our meetings, and so, if possible, I'd like to enter this into the record. This one's a little lengthier than the other ones, and so.
I'd move to receive.
Second motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Give a copy to the auditor.
Karen, you have one, correct?
All right, I'll just, uh, read this quick and then, um, I'll let Supervisor Raddick chime in as well, so. It has been the LEC Authority's commitment since the beginning of the project to provide the information once we had the information ourselves and to otherwise be transparent. Corrective work is still ongoing in the county attorney space in Lower C after that area was punched during the week of October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Last week, there were four painters in this area completing, completing final painting. Corrective work is still ongoing in the sheriff's office space, court space, and medical op in Upper C that was punched during the week of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. This area also had painters working to make the area acceptable. Punch lists were completed in the Upper C, including intake, the week of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, with the assistance of four people from the authority, Baker Group, Woodbury County, and four people from GGA. Corrective work is now being completed in that area. A mock-up of acceptable block wall was completed by Hausman Construction and approved by the punch list team with the corrective measures needed on December sixth, twenty twenty-three. An exterior punch list was complete on the parking lots, the driveways, and the grade around the buildings. Uh, a request by the authority was made for a mock-up of a jail pod for approval for the week of December eighteen, twenty twenty-three. This will allow for the jail, jail area to be completed to help expedite the punch list process. Work with Building Services and Kenny Schmidt, who called in some favors to get Midwest Alarm on site, so fire alarm testing can be completed by the week of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The next punch list slash, uh, area verification will be the week of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and this will include, um, help from the authority, GGA, and the County Building Services, as well as Baker Group. Accurate Controls, Inc. is still on site installing the building's security electronics, and that work is ongoing. Fibercom has provided internet access into the building, and so WCICC's team has completed equipment installation in two of the IT closets and have connectivity to equipment in designated rooms. The work is still ongoing until completed, and work continues in all areas of the building. Uh, Supervisor Raddick and myself were able to tour the LEC last Wednesday afternoon. I think we were out there for roughly an hour and a half with, uh, members of Hausman, Baker Group, and, uh, the authority. Um, I think, uh, that's my third time out there, so I'll maybe let Keith share a little bit with what he saw, if that's all right.
Sure thing. Yeah, I've got to start by saying I've never been more excited to be in jail, so. That was, uh, quite, quite an opportunity. We start at the intake, which is actually, uh, kind of a unique experience because, of course, that's where most who get to visit the jail in the future will have their tour start as well. The first thing you'll notice is it's a very secure intake area, not in a downtown alley. Uh, you know, they, they have the overhead doors, uh, quite secure doors, uh, you know. They're definitely built to a higher standard than, you know, the garage door on your house. You know, from there, there's quite a bit, uh, you know, medical rooms, padded cells. Uh, never, of course, experienced what a padded cell is like before. I did get to go into one of those, and they're not that soft, by the way.
And we did let him out.
Because you were testing it, or?
You know, one of the doors didn't work after they let me in, so I don't know if that was on purpose, or, I'm just kidding. Uh, two, it, one of the things that I think was so cool about it was seeing the two-D plans into a three-D building. Because we've, we've all seen the full plans, you know, those aren't for public use, you know, because we're not going to just give out the plans to our jail. But seeing it as a three-D building and of that scale, I mean, it's, it's one thing to see, but it's another thing to, like, actually walk through it. Uh, you know, a hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet, I think, is what, you know, was originally touted as. It's, it's got to be bigger than that. I, I don't remember, um, you know, where we're at now, but it, I just remember in our initial discussions, it was supposed to be a hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet. It's, it seems every bit of that and more. Uh, four courtrooms, pretty much, you know, they're, they're looking ready to run, you know, uh, attorney's offices, um, sheriff's department offices. A lot of these areas are, are pretty much ready to go, you know, there's a lot of blue tape and, you know, touch up, you know, final work stuff that they're doing. There's a lot of, um, just, you know, the medical room is, is a fairly good-sized room. They can fit a, you know, a, a, I don't know, what do you call it, a gurney or whatever through the door and everything. You know, they have a lot of meeting areas for an attorney and an inmate or family and inmate. So i- it's very impressive and just seeing, like, the control rooms and the cells and, uh, you know, actually seeing it in person from the plan was just kind of a neat experience, so. It looks very close to done, uh, very close to these guys getting out there and doing some training, uh, very close to having all the computers and security systems all ready to rock and, um... This, this gives me a lot more confidence that we're going to have it done and, and we're going to get some, uh, movement over there pretty soon, so. I'm encouraged. I, I hope people that are in the community are encouraged that, you know, while it's not been the most smooth point to get here, you know, it, it's not been the easiest path. We can control COVID, we can control building costs, we can control, you know, supply chain issues over the last few years. But, uh, anything that we had a say in or we could control, we've, we've done everything we could to protect taxpayer dollars and interests and make sure that this building is done right. and interests, and make sure that this building is done right, and we're not gonna have to redo things, so...
And to that point, Keith, not to interrupt you, but I know we were downstairs in the county attorney's space, and they were painting down there, and we were walking through, and, uh, for those that don't know, Keith spent a large part of your professional career painting, and he made the comment to the group, you know, they're being pretty picky on what they're wanting to come back and touch up, um, and I think rightfully so, because we're, this is a very expensive building, and when we have people move in there for the first time, everything needs to be as perfect as it can be, so...
Well, I can remember one other job where it was that kind of level of detail, uh, that I worked on, and that was the Orpheum Project downtown, so, uh, most other commercial-type projects were not to that level of, uh, concern, so, um, just for the record.
And so, um, next week, a week from today, Chairman Ung is gonna be touring the jail with, um, John Templar, who's our, our outside counsel on the matters of the jail, as well as, uh, Ron Wick from the LEC with the LEC's attorney, Jody McDougall, so you guys will be able to show those folks around. Um, outside of that, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the two supervisors? Any further comment? All right, thank you. Next week, we'll have, uh, probably some updates from that, uh, from that tour, if not in a full item, and board concerns. Item ten is reports on committee meetings. Mr. Raddick?
Didn't really have anything other than, uh, let's see. Um, there was the DC Focus Group where we had just gotten the information to Barbara Slonaker about, um, our interchange project, which is already in the packet, just more information on what grants we're targeting, and of course, the jail visit that we just discussed, so, LEC, I should say.
Reports. Supervisor Bittenger and I had the Commission of Veterans Affairs, uh, last Wednesday, a very good meeting, and we just kind of reiterated, and we're on the same page, I was appreciative of this, that evaluations are the purview of the commission per Iowa code, that doesn't fall to the Board of Supervisors, nor HR, uh, nor are they tied to pay, um, except for cost of living increases, which is typical of every department. There was some discussion on, uh, requesting from the commission another look at the director's salary, and so we just shared a little bit of historical perspective, that the last time we did that, if you remember, it came as an improvement request, uh, and just shared that this is gonna be a tough budget year, um, but it would need to be on the back end of January to March, we'd like to have data, it would most likely, if approved by the board, and we can underline the big if, because we're only speaking for, uh, the two of us, and it would be effective July first, 2024, um, and we would wanna see data like veterans served, or our ability to pay, or similar-sized counties, or numbers, um, to be able to make an informed decision. Um, other than that, uh, they were very appreciative of the Pancakes Master, which is what their nickname for Dan Bittenger is, and outreach, so, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but...
That's gonna live with me probably to my deathbed.
Yeah. Could be called worse.
Right, right.
That's all I have.
Nelson?
Um, obviously, I just gave an LEC update, uh, Wednesday last week, at about a two-hour meeting with Mark Nara at the Secondary Roads Office. We covered quite a few topics, including the Tiff Project, half of that being Moville there, um, as well as some kind of some long-term planning, and I think we're gonna have an agenda item next week to discuss one of those topics, uh, but appreciative, that's a big department, we're a big county, there's, there's a lot of roads, a lot of bridges, and so those, uh, again, I, and there, you get a lot of criticism for, for him or members of that department, and I get a lot of them, being the rule supervisor, but, uh, it's a massive undertaking that those guys put on, or take on every week, so, that's all I have.
All right. Uh, the only things I have are, um, last Friday, I was able to go to the, uh, Family Treatment Court with Judge Perry, uh, that happens, um, on Wednesdays in the afternoon, and so it was, it was great to see, uh, that we've actually have the longest-running family treatment court in the state of Iowa, uh, and this is where Judge Perry and many other agencies help, uh, parents, uh, that have become addicted, uh, retain their children, not have their children taken away, uh, or if they've been convicted, earn their, earn the right to, um, be back with their kid, and to see, uh, one of the parents graduate from the family treatment court, and were nine months sober, uh, and reunited with their kid, and to see that happening, and just, uh, seeing the support from many different agencies, um, our local judge, um, and other, other staff members here, uh, was just great to see, and , uh, they are just looking for some funding, and I'll be bringing an agenda item here in the next couple of weeks about that, and, but, um, it was just great to see, uh, locally seeing, uh, adults getting off drugs and alcohol, and which, you know, which helps everybody, helps every budget, helps the county, helps the sheriff department, and the, you know, the police department, and, uh, helps kids have a stable home, uh, and have a mom and dad there, so it was just great to be part of that, and, uh, I know that they're open to any, um, partnerships with any of us, or churches or nonprofits that can help them, and so just contact Judge Perry with that. And then secondly, yesterday, I was able to attend, uh, SHIP provided a mental health forum down at the Sioux City Public Museum, uh, and multiple agencies were there, Sioux City Mental Health, St. Luke's Mercy Catholic Charities, uh, Sioux City Police Department was there, and so it just was highlighting the need of what's going on in our community with mental health, and what, uh, can individual citizens do, organizations, and also local governments do, so it was just good, uh, to hear some awareness, hear some points, get some statistics of what's going on, um, and, uh, so, uh, we'll be bringing some recommendations here in the future, I will, just things we could do, just practical tips and things we could help out with, and so, that's all that I have to report on.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
Uh, the letter you read, and item eight, would you like to have a motion to receive that?
It was already in the record.
Pardon?
It was already in the record. It was in the agenda. Any other reports on committee meetings? Hearing none. Item eleven is citizen concerns. For any items not already addressed on the agenda, if you'd like to address the board, please approach the microphone, name and address, and your three minutes, please.
Didn't wanna trip in front of anybody. Hi, everybody. Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix, 406 Willow Street. Good to see you all again, and yes, I'm gonna be talking again about the proposed Salix Drainage District and only about that. I have one update for all of you, and then two additional points just to remind you and everyone in the room. Uh, the update is, I've met multiple times with the Farmers Drainage District and emailed, and I was at their most recent meeting this past Thursday, they've agreed to give the CO6 an extension of two years, so 2024 and 2025 for $6,000 per year, so at least we're not completely under the gun for now, uh, with a complete understanding that the reason why they give an extension is hopefully the Board of Supervisors approves the creation of the district in February, and those two years will be spent digging the ditch, so that's ready to go, so, wanted to give you an update on that, that I got that done. Okay, so, first point I'd like to make is that on the November twenty-first public hearing, the Board of Supervisors grouped it into three categories, people for it, people for it but didn't like the engineer's report the way it was written, and then people against it, and I re-watched the YouTube video, because you guys know I love to watch your YouTube video channel, and I double-checked, not one person actually spoke in the third category of did not want it, not one person. So, even though they don't, some of the people don't like the way it's currently routed once it gets past the interstate, everyone was for it, there is no one against it, and I just wanna make that very, very clear. Not one person came up and said, "I don't want Drainage District, 'cause I don't wanna pay the tax or the assessment," not one person, and there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are gonna pay taxes, not one person said no. People, first and after person has contacted me or seen me at City Hall, or dropped by City Hall, and they all said the same thing, that, "I'd rather not pay the tax, but I don't wanna end up like Hornick, I get it." So, the vast majority of Salix citizens understand the need and want it. My last point is kind of tied into that. Every time I've come up in front of you, I've introduced myself as Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix. I signed the petition as Mayor of Salix. I didn't have to do that. I'm a landlord, I could just sign to Kevin Nelson. The reason I did that is so that everyone involved, supervisors, the lawyers, everyone, knew that the City of Salix government wants this to happen. All of their elected officials want this to happen. We represent over three hundred people in the City of Salix that want this to happen, and the reason that they don't come here in person is 'cause, one, they're busy, it's hard to get here at four-thirty, and, two, they trust their elected representatives, myself and Denise Burkhardt, to express what they want to do. That's the whole reason why they're, they elected us, and both of their elected officials said, "Please do this." So I hope you take that in mind, is that while only Denise and I spoke for, in favor of it, we represent hundreds and hundreds of people, okay? So weigh that in your calculation in two months. Otherwise, uh, last minor update is, uh, I haven't heard from VNK yet since the public hearing, but we have a council meeting tomorrow night, and Chad is supposed to come by and give us some kind of an update. I don't know what that update's gonna be, don't know, but I would recommend that the Board of Supervisors have some kind of subcommittee or designated person to work with VNK, to set up that public meeting in Salix where everyone can come to ask the engineers and supervisors, so that someone on the Board of Supervisors takes ownership of it between now and February, so that any issues that the public may have can get aired beforehand and ready to go in February, so, that's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So would you sort of trigger, after hearing enough from VNK, as far as it sounded to me, uh, a couple of weeks ago, like there were some alternative proposals that were being suggested, and he was going back to potentially suggest what some of those may be? And I know, I know we're coming up to the holidays, so I'm just, I'm trying to see if you could give us a little bit of a lead, um, because I don't know how often we are in touch with VNK and Patrick and so on, and, and wanna be helpful, I think, as a Board of Supervisors, um, but also wanna respect, you know, we're not going to, I don't think the Chair is gonna call a, a meeting down in Salix artificially, so just trying to keep that conduit of information flowing.
Sure. Uh, Patrick is probably at the same conference that Mark Nara is at, that's why he's not gonna be there tomorrow. All those engineers like to get together, Des Moines party, it sounds like, um, but I would agree, except that someone from the Board of Supervisors should be in contact with VNK at some level, and just have, maybe just an email or a phone call once a week saying, "Where are we at with this? What are your options?" I haven't heard of any of the, other than what was at the public hearing, I haven't heard anything concrete, hopefully I'll hear something tomorrow, 'cause I know some of the options were, everyone was fine once it got under the interstate. It was from, once you passed interstate to Snyder's Bend, that there were options like, "Well, should we go south, or should we do..." So, fifty percent of it, everyone's on the same page. It's that last fifty percent of where is it gonna end up, how's it gonna get to Snyder's Bend? But hopefully I'll hear something more from VNK tomorrow, but I, even if I do, someone from the Board of Supervisors should be checking up on VNK, saying, "What are the options you guys have been doing? Let's have a meeting down in Salix, something that works for the supervisor's schedule, the VNK's schedule, and we're happy to host it in Salix."
I would be willing to be that conduit, uh, no pun intended, unless you wanted to be, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So maybe we can be in touch, and I...
Mark Nara can put you in touch with Patrick and give him phone numbers and email addresses, so I'd work through Mark through VNK.
And I would assume it'd be after the first of the year, given that we're coming up to the holidays, plus you have a couple of years now, and not that you wanna wait that long, um, but you bought yourself a little time, um, and so if that's okay, I'll, you know, look to potentially schedule something and...
That makes sense to me, because odds are they're not gonna have anything concrete by next week anyway, those have ideas, so I would recommend maybe at the, in the beginning of the year, reach out to VNK and discuss what's been happening, and a plan of having some kind of a meeting down in Salix.
Appreciate the information.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none. Any board concerns?
I had one, that's kind of a quasi, uh, report on the committee meetings as well, but it has, it relates to, uh, Starcom. We've been having issues with the text alerts to our first responders throughout the county for some time. This question, this problem was really raised in the summer, uh, we've been working with Motorola, Motorola to try to work through these problems, but I've heard from some folks, it's largely impacting kind of the communities of Sargent Bluff, Salix, Sloan, Hornick. Um, our first responders, whether they're firemen or ambulance EMTs, they have pagers that they can get their warnings, or their, their communication from the comm center on what the call is, but they also get a, a text message to their phone, and for a lot of these guys, they always have their phone on them, their pager, maybe not so much, and the pagers can be, come out of range, depending on where they are physically. And so, the problem that we're having is that the texts aren't coming through to their phones, and so guys aren't getting the alerts that they need to respond to a fire call, respond to an ambulance call, which is obviously extremely concerning. Um, Starcom and Wendy Hess have been, um, twisting Motorola's arm very hard, and they implemented some fixes here, um, a week ago, we got an email yesterday that it has taken care of quite a few of the problems, although it seems that Salix and Sloan kind of continue to be that hot seat where they're not quite sure why some of those guys aren't getting the texts from the comm center. Um, but I've, I've just had enough rapport from some of these guys, and just want people to know that we're, we're working on it, we're taking this very seriously, we're, we're doing the best that we can, um, you know, keep those pagers handy, but we're, we're really pushing Motorola to try to find a permanent fix, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address, sometimes in years past, we've taken up budgets before the first of the year, um, to get a little bit ahead of schedule. I know next week is our last meeting, and so I'm just wondering, talking a little bit with Dennis, in terms of this being probably the most unique year that we faced in nine, um, in terms of a four-and-a-half million dollar shortfall, if we can combine some of the updated, uh, collectively bargained-for agreements with a couple other placeholders, and just see exactly what we're, we're facing, maybe get a state-of-the-budget update, um, and, and start looking at that, if that's something that we could do as early as next week. I know we're not taking up budgets, but I think it'll give us a, some granularity on that which we're facing, so...
Placeholders such as budget up, budget overview, anything else?
We cannot have a budget overview till I get the payroll from the Ottersburg, that's a bulk of our operations. Um, I'd like to have a budget addressed, say, at the first Tuesday after the new year, 'cause by next week, I won't have the information available. I just won't have it all available, I'm still waiting for other agencies to respond to what they want or request, whether the board approves it or not, but the big key is getting the payroll module combined with the operating module to get one budget, plus get all the revenues put in, so we really know where we're at, and then we'll have a list of items potentially to help us through the, the shortfall, the makeup.
Could I ask one other? Could you give kind of the update of how much, based on the legislative restrictions that we have?
Yes.
And how much of that's been potentially eaten up by the new three contracts, or...
Yeah.
Um, what kind of shortfall we're facing without everything being plugged in?
Yeah, I can tell next week, tell you what, 'cause the evaluation aren't finalized, they probably will be this week. She's been off six, so hopefully she's back tomorrow, Thursday, and she'll get it finalized. Then I can show you the sheet that I got from the Department of Rev, or Management, to show you how we calculate it, and what we have, how much is extra over our current levy, and general basic and real basic, those are funds we're tied to, and potentially I could have next week what the union contracts actually cost, with the FIC and IFRS added in, to see how much just those contracts there have eaten up of the seven hundred and four or the eighty-seven.
I just think that kind of one pager might be super helpful to know what kind of constraints we're under.
And then, you know, in January, probably the first Tuesday, 'cause we get an extra month this year, instead of March thirtieth, we can, we certify April thirtieth, which we'll need that extra month to filter through everything we gotta do. But I can give you something definitely, probably, I'm saying pretty sure the first Tuesday, 'cause I should have everything in by then. Revenue's everything, to see where we're at.
Okay.
So I got a different concern, I guess, uh, next week, there is a GOP women's event, was there others planning to attend that? uh, was there others planning to attend that?
Uh, I'm not.
I'd be there, Keith is for the first hour, then I'll have to leave.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it's because they allow men to attend, and not that we're saying we are.
I'm not identifying for just the week.
Thank you. Dennis?
Yes, I have one thing, item here, the county engineer wanted me to give you before, next this Friday's meeting, it kind of explains the minimum levy here, this will be presented after the meeting, with the legislature this next week, but if you want me to give it to you, please, ahead of time, if you want that entered in record, I will have a copy for Pat tomorrow morning.
Well, I don't, do we need to, Pat, if we're not gonna discuss this? We'll discuss it later?
Before he will be back, some time for the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other board concerns?
Not to belabor the point, but it, it may be nice to have Mark present on this as well, right after. I'm, I'm talking at our next meeting.
Next meeting?
Our, our next Board of Supervisors meeting.
Will we just hang him there up?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gonna do it Friday, you do it Saturday.
Okay. Just as how it's going to, how it's going to affect us in our particular budgeting, so.
Have an agenda item next week, talking about various aspects we're talking about here, plus engineer.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. Any other board concerns? Hearing none, we are adjourned.